Good evening, thank you for joining us. Today's Board of Ed, today is October 12, 2016. Mrs. Lambert, can you do the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to your Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Lambert. Next on the agenda, we have a number of meetings, minutes. Are there any recommendations for changes on any of the meetings?
We can do all of them together.
Yeah. I just want to accept, Mr. Lambert.
No changes? So, items A through D, all accepted? Mr. Kevin Hoxsey.
Yes, Kevin Hoxsey, parent, taxpayer, kid in the high school. I just want to bring up a couple of things. I downloaded a bunch of stuff off the Internet last week. First thing I want to do is talk about our high school. Our high school is only 16 percent readiness, according to 2016 rankings for college. Our math is still down, our reading is still down, it's not really up with the state. Second thing, I want to say, we have wonderful teachers at this high school. And our, I'm not blaming the teachers why this is the way it is, I'm blaming the administration. This board, some of the people on this board, this board, without a foundation, we have no school system, that's what we're running into. I downloaded some information from my superintendent from the last position she was at. If you guys go down there and download and see what the mess that was left behind, it's not good. And it's called the revolving door. We have lost seven principals in four years, between middle school and the high school alone. We talk about our kids, and we talk about money. How would you like to be at the high school right now, be a senior, and have a different director every single year? And have your new student handbooks come out three to four weeks later than normal? Because every time you get a new person, they want to change something. Okay? So, my point is, I'm disgusted with this board, I'm disgusted with what's been going on. We can't hold principals, never mind teachers. Before it was the teachers, and what I got from this board, it was all, oh, the pay's not there. The pay's not there. But now we're losing superintendents, I mean, we're losing principals. Now we're losing also administration staff and central office. This has to stop. This board needs to step up the polls and say, listen, enough is enough. You're supposed to be in charge of the superintendent. The superintendent's not supposed to be in charge of you. That's why you people are elected.
Point of order.
Thank you.
We're not here to listen to headlining attacks. No, it's out of order. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the Wyndham Special Education Presentation.
Good evening. I guess the title is not per se strictly special education, so I'm going to explain a little bit about it. The presentation is about really rethinking and how we support struggling students in our district. That will include special education and will include ELL students. A year ago, we start the conversation about what are the structures that we have in place to support special education? What are the structures that we have in place to support ELL students? How are the structures set up? Who are providing those supports? The time that are spent? Do we have pull-in? Do we have pull-out? And how can we be more effective in that process? At that particular time, we didn't have any funds to conduct a need assessment whatsoever. We requested it from the state, but we didn't have the funds to do so. At the end of last year, the state was very gracious with us and gave us some funding to enter in a partnership with DMC, the District Management Council, that, and Dr. Allman will give you some information, that work across the district, across the country, a school district, looking at how they are supporting struggling students, rethinking that, and providing example-based practices to really maximize the effectiveness of teacher, time, and support. Dr. Allman is a former superintendent here in Connecticut. She's been through this process, and she will tell the board as a superintendent herself. She also is a professor at UConn, and so she's here tonight to give that presentation. So, I'm not going to, you can introduce yourself, you can simplify better, but she's been through this process, and I don't know if you have the article about your school district and what your board said about this process that I read that was very, very effective? If you may share with our board, when you were superintendent, what the board said about this process.
Thank you very much, Dr. Garcia. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to share information with you about the study that is underway to support struggling students here in the Wyndham Public Schools. As Dr. Garcia said, my name is Diane Allman. I am a Hartford-born and raised person, and love my state, and I'm so pleased to be able to come back here and bring some of what I've learned over the many years of my work in education to the districts here in Connecticut. I left the state for some time, but came back about 25 years ago, and since then, I've been a principal in Branford, Connecticut, and assistant superintendent in Farmington. I worked at the Capital Region Education Council, where I ran the magnet schools. Then I went on to be superintendent in Simsbury for about 12 years. And it was in Simsbury where I did the work with the District Management Council that was so powerful that I stayed in touch with them after I did the project with them, which is very similar to the one we're going to talk about tonight. And when I left my superintendency in 2012, I began working with the DMC so that I could do similar work with districts, especially in Connecticut, but also in other parts of the country. So, what I'm going to share with you tonight is something that I believe deeply in, and I have seen it make a significant impact. It made an impact in my district. And, you know, I don't subscribe to just anything, I subscribe to things that I know work, and that is why I'm so pleased to be able to share this report with you, or this presentation this evening, and tell you what the work is all about, and our partnership with the Wyndham Public Schools, and then allow you to ask some questions, and hopefully I can answer all of your questions this evening. But to start out with, I want to say that this is not a one-shot deal. We're here to not only figure out what's going to help struggling students more, but we're going to stay and help the district implement the kinds of changes that need to be made. So, with that, I'm just going to start, and I think the title is pretty telling. Innovation Through Rethinking Supports for Struggling Students. The district has a good number of struggling students. We are aware of the data from the district and have taken a very careful look, and we know that there are many students here who are not meeting grade level standards, and it's our goal to work with the administration to try to be very targeted and specific in helping those students reach the grade level standards. And we're also, a second part of our work, and it will come a little bit later, is improving the effectiveness of the coaching program. The district has invested in coaches, and part of the work that DMC does is to help districts be very specific in how coaches can help teachers work with some of the most challenging students. And I think it's a real testament to the dedication of the system to its learners that coaching is being implemented here. So, I'm going to, my presentation is four parts. I'm going to especially focus on the first three parts, and time permitting, I would go into the case study, but I want to just give you a very brief overview of the District Management Council, DMC, talk about some of the project goals that we have here in Wyndham, and then also the methodology of how we go about the work. And if time permits, describe for you a case study. So, introduction to DMC. We're a Boston-based organization that works with school districts all over the country, and we do a number of things, but the majority of our work is helping districts focus on their struggling learners and align the systems and structures so that these learners get the help they need in a timely way. You can see in these three circles that student outcomes are our first priority, and the way we reach those outcomes is by helping the district with how it allocates its resources, and also how, to look at all of the systems and to see if there's efficiency in the system so that the dollars that the system is dedicating to student learning are as effectively used as possible. And so, that's kind of our mission. We've worked with districts, as I said, all over the country. We've worked with very large districts, we've worked with very small districts, probably, you know, worked with a district that's probably 150,000 students to a district with 1,200 students. So, size of district doesn't matter, and region of the country doesn't matter. You can see from that slide, we've worked certainly here in Connecticut, but Arizona, Minnesota, Texas, the principles that we use apply regardless of the setting. And we've worked with all types of districts, urban districts, large urban, small urban, rural, suburban. The work that we do is equally valuable across all of those kinds of districts. So, it's important for us to make sure, when we begin working with the district, that the philosophy of DMC is clear and that it's a good match for the district. So, we don't want to work in a place where the district isn't on the same wavelength in terms of what it believes that it wants for students. So, I'm just going to go over some principles here of what we believe, and we do find that it's a good match for the principals here in Wyndham. It's possible for school districts to raise achievement for students requiring additional support within the means of the existing budget. Our goal is not to come here and to tell you that you need to invest a lot more money. We're not here to say that, you know, any particular program has to be implemented that would cost the district resources. We're here to say, let's look at what you're currently allocating to student learning needs, especially struggling students, and let's see how we can make those resources be used as effectively as possible. In order to accomplish this, we look at three specific things, and I find, I found as a superintendent, that this was particularly unique. We take a lot of time to find out what the staff is currently doing with struggling students, and I will explain more how we go about that a little bit later. But we also share the district best practice. And it's not best practice that we decided, but it's based on the National Clearinghouse, based on a lot of research, and we have lots and lots of databases that we go to to find out best practice. And when we look at best practice for this school district, we will match it against districts of similar size and composition so that it's that kind of an apples-to-apples comparison. And then, we look at staffing guidelines, so trying to look at how the district, so we know, first of all, what staff are doing right now, and we measure that against best practice and say, what are the gaps between best practice and what they're doing now? And then we say, how much staff do we actually need to do best practice? To get the district to the point where best practices are being implemented. We also believe that general education is a big part of the answer. So, knowing that a student is getting really high-quality core instruction every day in the general ed classroom is a very high priority, and it is access to that general education curriculum that makes all the difference. Yes, intervention is necessary, but without the general education core curriculum being strong, students simply can't make the movement forward. We believe every district is different, the culture and the context matter. So, the way the work will unfold in this district will be different than it is unfolding in any other district, because we take time to know who you are, what your history is, the kinds of things you've already tried, who the people are here. We try to learn as much about the community as we can, we study a lot of your information, we ask for a lot of information from the district. So, when we set about eventually making some, identifying some opportunities, we know that those things will be a good match for who you are as a district. So, it's a very customized process. And lastly, we believe that no district ever benefited from a consultant's report. Our goal is not only to identify what the district could do going forward to better serve its struggling students, our goal is to help the district implement those, the things that the district chooses to do. So, for example, we might, at the end of our diagnostic process, come up with four or five opportunities the district might decide that it wants to tackle. Then we form a committee to help, to work with the district to make those changes happen. So, we don't want to just leave a report and say, good luck to the district. We really want to stay and help with implementation. So, those are some core beliefs that we have that guide everything that we do, and certainly will be the case here in Wyndham. So, I'm going to be talking about struggling students throughout this presentation, and it's important for me to define what we mean by struggling students. And for the District Management Council, this is intentionally broad. We believe that whether you're a student with mild or moderate disabilities, a special ed student, or whether you're an at-risk student who doesn't have an IEP, or a student who is very behind in reading for a lot of different reasons, you might have missed some early experiences, or you might be an English language learner who needs reading help. Regardless, the same ideas apply to all those categories of students. How those students, closing the gap between their current performance and grade level performance isn't very different for all of those different categories. There are a few things that have to be in place for readers to catch up, and I'll talk about those in a little bit. So, our definition is intentionally broad. We believe that regardless of the label or the condition, or how you got, how your learning gap occurred, you can use the same practices to help them catch up. So, many of these students require multiple modes of instruction, many learn and process information more slowly. It doesn't mean they're not smart, it just means they need more time, maybe another way, and they also need more, they need more exposure to reading. So, some of our goals here, specific goals, and these were identified by working with the superintendent and the leadership team. And I should say that we were here in the district at the end of the summer to work with the leadership team and to explain this process, and to explain how DMC works, and we've been in touch with the district, we're collecting lots of information, and about to do some of our more in-depth analysis. So, this process is underway. We have a couple of goals here. One is to examine how struggling students in any of those categories I just mentioned, students with disabilities are included, how are they supported, and to consider innovative approaches to improve student outcomes. What can we do that will help a learner catch up so that they can achieve grade level standards? And that is a very strong focus here. So, we're conducting our diagnostic right now, I'll explain what that is in a minute, but focus groups, interviews, and schedule sharing are all a part of that. So, the focus groups and the interviews are about to be underway, and schedule sharing, which I will explain, is going to happen in probably later in October, early November. We're identifying the district's current strengths. Our philosophy is to build off of strength, and there are clearly strengths in this district, and I have to say, one of them is the dedication of the people who work here. It was very apparent to us in that first meeting at the end of August, when we had all of the administrators and leaders in the district around the table, that they cared deeply about the students and their progress. And you can really accomplish anything if you have that quality in your staff, and it was very apparent to us. And then, we support the districts in, the district in planning and implementation of whatever it is that we find and the district chooses to do. And I want to say, we're not here to tell the district exactly what it should do, we're here to outline what we believe are opportunities that the district could tackle, and then we work with the district to help them decide which of any of the opportunities that they want to undertake. And secondly, as I mentioned, there were two parts to this project. The second part is to create a detailed picture of what coaching looks like in the district. Who gets coaching? How is time spent? Coaches are sometimes your most powerful teachers. You choose them to be coaches because you know that they can make a difference, and you want to kind of spread their work with other teachers. And so, we want to know how they're spending their time, and we want to know whether or not they're able to do the coaching work that they need to do. Maybe there's something getting in the way, it might be a schedule, it might be a structure in a particular building, but we want to unleash the potential of those coaches. So, that's our second focus. Tonight, I'm mostly going to speak to the first focus. So, when we start working with a school district, one of the first things we do is share this framework, because these six points on this framework represent the core of what we do when we come and work with the school system. And we help the school system examine each one of these pieces and determine where they are currently and what they might do going forward. So, let me just start, I'm going to go through each of these in turn, but they are six pieces, it's a framework, and together, if these, all of these six pieces are in play and working well, students will catch up. So, this slide is about the second point, it's about coaching. One of the reasons why it is so important that the district invested in coaches, and I really think that is another strength here, that investment in coaching, this one slide tells a lot. It says that the district offers professional development to teachers, and it does a good job of that. And there's a wide variety of professional development, it's continuous. But what this chart, in a very simple way, tells you is that until you provide coaching, I want you to imagine 100 students standing right here, I mean, 100 teachers standing right here. If professional development is provided to those 100 teachers, and it stops at the giving of information to those teachers, maybe you teach them about a new strategy in a professional development setting, or maybe you teach them a new way of doing, helping students develop fluency in reading, and they're all sitting in this room, and they pay attention, and they learn, only, what this says is that only about 10 percent of them, most of 10 out of 100, will go back to their classrooms and be able to use that new strategy in an ongoing, effective way with their students, because they haven't had coaching. So, just learning a technique or a strategy isn't enough, you need to have the on-the-job coaching. It's sort of like, you know, trying to learn how to do a sport, how to play basketball, by sitting on the sidelines and having somebody tell you about it, until you get on the court and you have somebody tell you which moves are working, which moves are not, you're not going to be a good player. And the same thing goes for teachers. When you get to provide coaching to teachers, the success rate of those 100 teachers, which was 10 percent, now grows to 90 percent. So, 90 of the 100 are going to be effectively using the new strategy if they have coaching. And so, the district has already invested in coaches, and what we want to make sure is that the resources that you're putting into coaching are getting the biggest effect possible on teachers. We want to make sure that coaches are able to spend the majority of their time with teachers, and that they spend them with the right teachers. So, that is what the coaching study is all about. Actually, I'm going to flip back to the slide for a minute. Let me just tell you about these pieces a little bit. Rigorous general education curriculum. So, there is no substitute for the general ed teacher having, being very skillful, and having struggling students in that classroom when they're teaching, when they're doing the first teaching. So, if it's a reading lesson, if it's a math lesson, a science lesson, those struggling students need to hear it from the general education teacher. It doesn't always happen, sometimes they get pulled out, and they get their service while the rest of the students are in the general ed classroom. The result of that is that those students are missing what we would call that first, most powerful teaching. And if they're not getting that from their teacher, it's pretty much guaranteed they're not going to catch up. So, it's not all they need, but it is the foundation upon which they build. Secondly, a coordinated and sustained focus on reading. One of our goals here is to really take a hard look at how elementary reading is done, but also reading through the middle and high school, so that we're very clear about what's delivered to kids, and how well it's working, who's doing it, how long, et cetera. So, a very strong focus on reading. Extra time to learn. So, struggling students can reach grade level standards if they have access to the core curriculum, and they have extra time. Excuse me, and oftentimes, the pull-out time for students is instead of the core curriculum. So, it's extra time to learn. They can learn, they might just need a little more time. Targeted interventions, making sure that when they are pulled for interventions, that the district is very clear about what they get, and why they get it, and who's providing it. Content-strong teachers, so another big focus is making sure the person providing the intervention is really strong in their content. For instance, sometimes, students who are struggling to read are pulled out of the classroom, and we'll find out if that's happening here, but I can tell you, it was happening in my district, and it happens all over the place, paraprofessionals might provide extra reading help. They are not content-strong. They're wonderful people, they have a rightful place in the school system, there are some things they can do very well, teaching reading is not one of them. So, oftentimes, students who struggle are getting their extra reading support from somebody who isn't highly skilled, and that, that isn't going to help them catch up. So, we take a look at the district and see where the district stands on that piece. And the last piece is data to track progress. So, making sure that we know whether readers are keeping up, if they're not keeping up, we need to know frequently so we can get them just-in-time help. So, this is a system that says that struggling learners can catch up, but we have to do certain things to help them catch up. And I would say that everything on this framework is, we've put the framework together, but it's all research-based. It's been proven to work in other places, and it's the combination of these things that we think make for a very powerful system. The first phase of our work together with the district is to focus on developing an understanding of current practices. So, what's currently happening in the district? How are struggling students currently getting their needs met? So, the first thing we did was to work with the superintendent and the leadership team to establish goals for what do we want to get done here, and develop what we're calling a guiding coalition team, an advisory group that will help us, as we come up with findings, we'll present those findings and say, does this make sense? Did we get it right? You know, is there something here that maybe doesn't seem right for this district? So, it's a very much of a conversation with an advisory team, and that advisory group is not just the administration or just the principals, but it will have teachers and the stakeholders all involved. So, we want to enter into dialogue with the people in the district to say, okay, here's what we found during our diagnostic, and, you know, tell us how this sounds and help us move forward. We share research on best practice, so we want to make sure the district understands where they're headed. And then, we provide highlights, which, as I said earlier, are strengths and areas or opportunities for improvement. So, this diagnostic phase is what we're undertaking this year. And shortly after the first of the year, we will be zeroing in on the opportunities that the district has for improvement in services to struggling students. Post-diagnostic and going forward, probably towards the latter half of this school year and into the next school year, we do something that's called Align on Opportunities. So, we work with that advisory group. Let's say we present four to five or six opportunities, and we say to the advisory group, which one makes the most sense for this district to work on? The answer's different in every place, because what you need to work on depends on what you've done previously, where you are now, what kinds of things are currently underway. So, we ask the district to work with us and identify the opportunity that they think will have the most impact and is also feasible for the district right now. And then, we develop priorities based on those observations, and we define a vision for success. What that means is, if the district chooses to work on ensuring that every student has that extra time to learn in reading, if that's what they want to do, we ask the district to tell to tell us what that would look like if it were in place today. So, create the vision of where you're trying to go and we're going to help you get there. And then, we plan for implementation and then we, the district implements. And so, our involvement is heavier in the beginning and as we go through the process, the district takes on more and more responsibility so that by the end of this project, the district is fully independent and ready to continue on into the future with the changes embedded and clearly in place and functioning in the district. So, in this initial phase, we're developing a deep understanding of how the district currently serves its struggling students. Lots of things going on, so we're learning about everything that's going on in the district and we, as I said, we compare it to best practice. We identify strengths and then, so this part about a short customized list, we strongly believe that giving the district a list of 10 or 20 things to do isn't very helpful at all. We know that any district, not just this district, but any district can't tackle that many things and be successful. So, we develop a short list of what we think are the highest-impact changes that could make a difference for students. And we ask the district to decide among that short list, the items on that short list. Couple slides on our methodology and then I'm going to start and stop and see if you have questions. So, I mentioned that we're gathering a lot of information. So, first thing we do is interviews with district leaders. Then, we do focus groups with representatives of people from all over the district. I just came back from working with the district and over a three-day period, we probably interviewed about 200 people who have different roles in the district. It might be board members. It might be administrators. We want to know what your current experience is because we don't want to just know what the numbers are. We want to know what it means and what it feels like to be somebody who works in the schools or a student who actually attends the schools. So, we talked to parents. We talked to students at the secondary level, teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, board members. We get as wide a view as we can about what's going well and what the district, and what these folks in the district feel could be better. We also do classroom observations. It's not possible to tell a district how they might improve if you can't actually see what teaching and learning looks like on Monday morning when the kids are here and the teachers are here. We also do some data analysis. The district is in the process of giving us, we have a data request that we ask for and it's all kinds of information, but it's about the people who work here, about student achievement results, about the resources that the district has and so forth. So, we have a very good quantitative understanding as well about the district. And we do something that's called staff schedule sharing, which means that for certain roles of people who serve struggling students right now, and that might be a reading teacher, it might be an interventionist, it might be a special ed teacher, it might be a paraprofessional, we ask them to share their schedule for a pretty typical week using a technology tool that we have. And we collect all that information and we can show the district how people are spending their time in very fine detail. So, practitioners might say, they might, on a given week, and we encourage them to fill it out for five days in a row rather than wait till the end of the week. They might fill it in, so from 8:30 to 9:00, I was teaching three students and we were working on phonics and those students were in third, fourth grade. So, we know exactly what they're doing at every point during the week and we can aggregate that data and we can show the district how people are spending their time. And then, anyway, so then we put all this information together. We put together the qualitative information as well as the quantitative information to develop a series of what I call opportunities that the district might undertake, given its current status, its relation of the current status to best practice and how the district might move forward to bridge the gap between where students are now and helping them reach grade-level standards. This next slide is just a screenshot of what it looks like. Teachers would log on and we provide lots and lots of support for this, but teachers will log on and enter their weekly information and we analyze the schedules and look for trends and compare with best practice. So, this particular graph, the bar graph that you can see off to the right, is telling us for a particular practitioner, I think this might even be a speech and language person. We also do those practitioners. That particular bar graph, I've seen before and the brownish-red bar is whether they're working one-on-one with a student. The blue bar is whether they're working with one to two students and then the green bar is whether they're working with a group of three to five. So, we have a lot of information about how people are spending their time. And you all know better than anybody that the vast majority of your budget goes to the people. So, the better we can understand how people are spending their time, we can help you figure out how to use that time in the most effective way possible. So, I'm going to stop there before I go to the case study because I've just given you a whole lot of information. I'm imagining there are lots of questions. I'm happy to answer your questions and just see if we can develop a clear picture of what it is we're about to undertake here. Anybody have a question?
I'm Tracy Lambert. I moved from over there so my back wasn't to the screen. I'm sorry. So, you began here in August and you've been meeting with administrators. Have you been in any of the buildings already?
Not yet. We're about to undertake that phase where we do the interviews and the, we do that all at once, the interviews and the classroom observations. So, there's a team, it's not just me, there's a team that'll come to the district and we'll spend three to three full days here and, you know, probably there'll be two, at least two interview rooms, maybe at some points even three. And then, the team goes out and we spread across the district and look at schools.
So, you're going to do K through the high school or pre-K?
We're going to ask the superintendent, we're going to ask Tracy to tell us, you know, which buildings we should be looking at and so, the district gives us the schedule.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Now, I know we have coaches. So, the data that they have already gathered in regards to their student and where they are, because I've seen a lot of this, walking in the buildings and looking at the progress that each student is doing and they're very meticulous on the information that they gather from, from working among teachers and working together. Is that something that you also look at and provide feedback to the teachers?
So, a lot of what we're going to do with the coaches, there will be interviews with all the coaches. We are going to ask them to do a time study as well. So, if you raise your hand, you say, I want to be a coach and I want to, and I'm assuming that these coaches are working with teachers so that teachers can be better teachers of reading. One of the things we ask them to do is to tell us in a given week, how they're spending their time. So, when they're with students, we want to know, I mean, with teachers, we want to know, you know, are you working with one teacher? Are you working with a grade level of teachers? We want to know whether or not, in many, many districts, I'm not saying it's happening here, in many districts, coaches are pulled off of their coaching work to do administrative work or other tasks, or maybe the coaches have a lot of paperwork to do that's taking up time that could be spent with teachers. And we help them. So, once we know what's going on in terms of, you know, one of our beliefs is that, you know, you want a coach to, you want the coaches to impact as many teachers as possible. So, if you're working one-on-one with a teacher, that's good, but better still, if you can find two or three teachers who are, have the same issue with their students, like students who might not be progressing in a certain area, you'll get more done because you're working with three. So, we help them work through how to spend their time most effectively. And if they're stuck because they're being pulled off of duties, then we can help refine the job description and, and create ways of monitoring that those people that you, they're your, very talented people. You've chosen them because they have good ability. They've proven that they can do the work in their own classroom and they've also proven that they're going to be good working with other adults. We want them working with teachers as much as possible. So, it's more that we work with their, how they spend their time and who, which teachers they interact with. And part of what we will be looking at is whether or not they're having an impact on the teachers, whether the teacher's performance is better as a result of the coaching.
Thank you.
So, how well, how well does this pick up climate and culture? Because one of the issues that we have in our district is that, is it's 69% of our students are Hispanic and...
Are we up to 84%?
More than 85% free and reduced lunch, whereas 92% of our staff is Anglo and there's, and probably more than 90% of our staff was raised in Affilid. So, there's, there's just a lot of, there's a lot that the staff doesn't know about the students and the students don't know about the staff because they come from completely different backgrounds. And I don't, I don't know how much you can pick that up in a focus group.
So, we do. We, honestly, we ask two basic questions with a lot of follow-up questions and I'll say it right here because there's no secret about them. What's something that's going well here that you really think is valuable and you would not want to lose? And what is something that you wish were different here? And we find that people are incredibly honest and my guess is that those teachers who don't have similar backgrounds from the students that they teach feel what you're feeling, what you're expressing is that, you know, I don't understand or I might not have the background to, to support. And so, that might, so, it is a piece of helping struggling learners and so, that might be one of the outcomes of this. But it's not necessarily something we'll find from the quantitative piece. I mean, we know, the data that you're sharing right now, we'll know that too because we're going to get that data from the district. But the, kind of the depth of the problem or the way it's experienced by the staff will come through in those interviews. And it may well develop into or become a part of one of the opportunities. But the only way, and we talk to parents as well. So, we try to talk to as many parents as the district can put together for us and, you know, if we have to start at, you know, seven in the morning and interview parents through eight or nine o'clock, we will do whatever it takes to get the right people, to get the right people in those focus groups so we can really get a clear sense of what's going well here in terms of supporting students, but also what are some things that are getting in the way? Any other questions?
Yeah, question for you. When we identify, or you identify the coaches, what kind of training do the coaches go through so that they can continue on?
So, that's something that we will be asking them and then, we can take a look at the kind of training they have. And we know also from the research that certain kinds of training is really helpful to coaches. I mean, part of it is you may be really good in your own classroom, but then when you're, when it's time to work with other adults, you might need some skills. By interviewing the coaches, we'll find out what they feel are some weaknesses. We'll also be identifying classroom teachers and interviewing them and asking them, you know, hopefully interviewing teachers who are being coached and get that. So, again, a lot of that is going to come through and one of the recommendations, we certainly will have recommendations around coaching because that's one of our focus areas. And if it, if it is that they need more training, that will come through that process, that interview process.
Mrs. Lambert?
Thank you. I'm sorry. I keep hearing the voice back here, so I turn around.
When you were speaking earlier, you were talking about reading and ELA. Is that mostly your focus or is it across a discipline?
So, I use that as an example and in fact, we strongly believe and it's supported by, you know, decades of research that the one most important thing you can do for every kid is make sure they're a good reader. And, you know, oftentimes, they get out of elementary school and we say, okay, it's middle school. We're just going to help them get through when they get to high school and the, teaching them to read stops. It can't stop because they have to be good readers. So, that is so fundamental that we really say to the district, if you have struggling readers in the middle school and the high school, we have to help you find a way to not just help them get through school, but to become readers because you can't graduate students who can't read and think they're going to have a future. It's like, that has to be a real focus. And I'm looking at Dr. Garcia, I know that we share that passion. So, yes, I've been talking about reading and that's a really big focus, but math is as well. And, you know, honestly, we could stretch that out to say, science and other subjects, but there are two things that, you know, if you could guarantee every school, every student in this district graduated able to read and had a good, firm grasp of mathematics, doesn't have to be calculus, you know, a good, firm, that they have the skills to be a functioning citizen, they understand mathematics, that's a gift that you can give your kids. And we think it's quite possible that your results can be much better than they are today by really thinking about how you, the services that are provided, when and how they're provided. So, math, I would say, is another strong focus, but if you have to choose among the two, I'm going to put reading at the top.
Well, yeah, and I understand. It sounds more like you're talking about elementary levels though in some of your discussion because it's all integrated in the same classroom.
Yeah.
I'm concerned because at the high school and at the middle school, there aren't coaches right now. So, that's 1,200 of our students that are unsupported by coaches. Now, this is an initiative we're going to bring forth. We've had reading teachers cut by at least half at the high school with our budget, you know, problems and stuff like that over the past few years. This is an initiative. I think it's something that we need to be able to embrace through employment as well as the services that you plan to provide.
Yeah. And so, clearly, middle school and high school is a part and if I didn't make that obvious enough, then I want, you know, apologize, but it is truly a strong focus. K through 12. We also think that there might be ways to use existing resources in a way that is going to be more targeted to getting kids that extra 30 minutes. I mean, I think there are ways. We've helped a lot of districts, just finished working with a, probably one of the lowest-performing districts in Massachusetts and they're turning around because they're, they're stuck, they're not doing some things they used to do and they're doing other things that are more effective. And I'm not saying that you can meet every need with your existing budget. I know that you're very stressed in terms of the myriad of needs your kids have and the resources you have, but we do think that you could do better and do more with your existing resources and maybe with a plan over time, a very targeted plan, the rest is possible.
I wasn't doubting it. I just, you talked reading and you talked ELA. So, I wasn't curious.
Thank you for your question. I think it was important to clarify.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it for questions. Dr. Garcia, do you want me, or Board Chair, do you want me to go through the case study or is this enough?
No, I think this is good information for the board. I wanted the board to have a little picture. Dr. Omen presented to the administrators in August. I wanted the administrator to have this information before we make a decision if this is something we want to tackle because if the administration said, we don't want to tackle this, we don't think it's the right time, but the administration is very supportive, principals and directors are very supportive of this project. They think it's something that's going to be beneficial to the district, will give us some other opportunities to focus on learning differently in the future. So, and I personally think it's a good opportunity for the district to look at different options, particularly in lieu that budgets are not increasing over time and we have to find different ways to be more effective and still provide the same quality service to our students.
I just, I want to close by saying it's a real privilege to be here and a privilege to work with the district and with the superintendent and the leadership team. There's real good work to be done here and these kids deserve every, they have every right to a good education and if we can contribute to that, we're just pleased to be here to help. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to add one item under action item.
Two.
Two, actually. I have one, the discussion and possible action regarding the Director of Finance Employment Contract.
Move we add action item for a discussion and possible action regarding the Director of Finance's Employment Contract?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
I'd also like to move that we add action item to...
John, did you abstain or oppose?
You opposed. Thank you, John.
Okay. So, I'd like to move that we add a...
Yes.
Go ahead.
Action item to consider budget transfers submitted by the Director of Finance.
Why was that not for game?
Budget transfers.
You have to speak into your mic. They can't hear you.
To the people that weren't in our conference.
Yes.
That would be a second.
Thank you. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.
We just voted to add those two items to the agenda.
Correct. That's correct. Do you have any questions for Chris?
Wait a minute. We still have to, now, we need to go back to action items, right?
Okay. Sorry. Chris, did you pass the information?
Yes.
Correct.
Everybody.
Okay.
I passed it out.
Thank you.
So, I move that we approve the personnel recommendations provided in reference to. For the packet. Need a second.
I need a second.
Approve the personnel recommendations that were distributed in the packet?
To discuss that?
We need a second first.
I need a second.
Second, second.
Thank you, Ms. Lazard. All those in favor?
It's going to be a discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, no discussion.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I thought you... I'm ready to vote.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, Janet? Thank you.
Okay. I recommend we take up the budget transfers next because we should probably take up the other item after the executive session.
Correct.
So, we just received a list of budget transfers. Mr. Johnson, would you like to just kind of run through these really quickly, like you did for the...
Thank you, Dr. Sewell. The financial statements indicate that we expended our budget of $45,102,946. The budget transfers, primarily, the only one that stands out is, is Buildings and Grounds on a yearly basis redistributes accounts that they have available balances in to accounts that they need funding in to close out the fiscal year. The final transfer is to close out the 2015-2016 fiscal year. We're essentially moving personnel savings and benefit savings related to those personnel savings from those accounts to transportation and tuition. Transportation and tuition are driven by special education overages. And essentially, we're moving $1.5 million from savings to $1.5 million in deficits to end, to close the fiscal year out on a balanced basis. Are there any questions related to the savings or the overages?
Mrs. Lambert? $950,000 in certified personnel, were those positions that weren't filled?
It's a combination of factors that we went over in the meeting.
I'm sorry, I couldn't be there.
Yeah, no, it's, it's fine. It's, it's three variables typically. It's vacancies, it's turnover in those positions, and it's also, to fully expend some of our grants, we have to move certified staff over into those grants where it applies to expend them, both state and federal. So, that's where we get those savings from. And then, related to those savings, we have benefit savings. So, those are, are areas in which we are able to fund the transportation shortfalls and the tuition shortfall.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Chris, if I'm reading this right, we had $1 surplus at the end of the year?
I'm sorry. John, that could be 75 cents.
$1 surplus?
All right, I'll give it, I'll give it to the town.
I just want to make sure I was reading.
A rounding error, yes. Some spare change.
Actually, it was only 75 cents.
I don't know, I couldn't find a home for it, I'm sorry.
Found in the cushions of the couch in your office, right?
Yeah, exactly.
All those in favor? We're voting on the transfers now.
We need a motion. We need a motion, a second.
We had a motion.
We had a motion, and we had a second.
Mr. Gomez, a second. So, we have a motion on the floor to approve the transfers.
Correct.
Yeah, we had a motion to add it, but not to...
Yes, we have a motion to add it, but not to approve it.
Not to approve it.
I thought I did move to approve it. Sorry, I moved to approve the transfers recommended by the...
Second.
Dr. Gomez.
All those in favor?
I'm abstaining because I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't, didn't get the full...
Mrs. Lambert's abstaining, Janet. Thank you. Now, the second one.
Well, we have to do that after we've had the executive session, right?
Before.
It's before.
Okay. You're going to take action on the...
Correct.
On the employment contract before you have the executive session?
No, you have to give them the option.
To attend the executive session?
Correct.
To do it in public, no, to do it in public.
To do it in public.
Well, we do it after the executive session ends. If you're going to just...
No, we're not going to have the discussion. We're asking Chris if he would like to do it under executive session or in public.
Well, he has the option, yes, of whether or not he wants us to do the discussion in the executive session.
Correct.
Before we do that, can I just take an opportunity to acknowledge Mr. Miguel Pavan? Mr. Pavan is here with us tonight, and he has just been appointed as the new Director of Public Services. As you know, Leanne Parker has been with the district for 19 years, and she will be retiring November 1st. She will be missed. Looking forward to going to Arizona. But Mr. Pavan will be starting with us very shortly. Welcome, Mr. Pavan. We're looking forward to having you onboard. You will have a wonderful team to work with. Started with the Assistant Directors right behind you, Mrs. Suzanne Kraft. That will be a wonderful asset to you. And we're looking forward to working with you. It will be a challenging opportunity, but very rewarding as well. So, welcome to Wyndham Public School.
Thank you.
Mr. Pavan, would you like to come forward?
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to join this team. I've heard many things, many great conversations, and I just heard Dr. Omen say such nice things about the dedication of your staff. So, I'm excited to work with the district leaders and staff to improve achievement and outcomes for all students and especially students with disabilities. And so, I'm very excited about the opportunity. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Pavan.
Yeah, okay, so, so, the question is...
Chris?
I prefer to hold an executive session, the review.
Okay. Thank you.
Public comment if there's any?
No.
Doesn't look like we've got any public one.
So, we're moving on because there's no public comment.
So, we move that we enter executive session to discuss exempt documents pertaining to personnel matters?
Mm-hmm. All those in favor?
Wait a minute, we need a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. We take five minutes.